All right, I think it looks like everybody's here. My name is Ed Elsner and the Chair of the South passing the Finance Commission. And we're calling to order the July 4th, 2021 special meeting of the South passing of Finance Commission. Our first order of business is roll call. Vice Chair Troy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Finley.
Here.
Commissioner Tao. Commissioner Wood.
Yeah.
And City Treasurer Pia.
Here.
And I'd also like to acknowledge that we have our council member liaison Donovan. Manager, thank you, Finance Manager Albert Trin. Accounting Manager Arminie Trashin and also our interim Assistant City Manager Elaine Aguilar. Ms. Aguilar, do we receive any written public comment?
There are no written comments and I also don't see any members of the public online. So you also don't have any in-person comments this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. With no public comment, let's move to the agenda item. And this is the review of the fiscal year 2020 annual comprehensive financial report.
Yes, Chair, members of the commission and council member. We do have Brianna Schultz with us from our auditing firm to give you a presentation on this item this evening. I would like to mention that, and before we get into this, just to give some accolades to the Finance Department staff here, to Albert, Armina, Stefan, Stephanie, just for, you know, getting this done and getting this before the commission this evening. This is really good news because it means we're back on time, we're back on schedule again. We'll roll right into the fiscal year 21 audit as soon as we get past this one. And audits and budgets will be up to date again. So we're pretty proud of that accomplishment. At the end of the presentation from Brianna, I will go over very the findings, you know, the auditors. Still do have some findings regarding the city's financial system, we'll review those. The, the good news on that front is we did, we did see a reduction in the number of findings, but we will go over that at the end, after we go through the audit itself. So at this point, if Brianna could be unmuted, I will turn it over to her.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I apologize, my video is not on, but I'm not really in the best capacity to be seen. I threw out my back the other day, so I'm going back and forth between sitting and standing and moving and it's, anyway. I'll just keep myself hidden, so. Um, so yeah, again, thank you to Armina, Albert, Marcy, the Finance Department. This has been, from when we started this audit, I think we actually really started the year in process in May. We did this in less than two months, which is, I'd say, standard procedure for a city audit, the length that it runs. So, you know, great, great job by the staff. Thank you so much. Everything went very smoothly this year. Couldn't, couldn't ask for, you know, a better client when it comes to that. So we just got to pick up, pick up where we left off and keep moving forward. Um, so Elaine, I wasn't actually told to, you know, to prepare anything per se. So I'm not sure if there's questions that, you know, anyone in the committee wants to ask to start us off. I don't necessarily have a presentation other than, you know, I'm just here really to answer questions.
Would you be prepared, Brianna, just to give a high level overview?
Um, as far as the audit procedures, I can, yes. But as far as when it comes to the numbers, we don't typically go through numbers because again, those are the responsibility of management. So we're just here to audit those numbers.
I don't know if the commissioners have any specific questions you'd like us to respond to.
I was, to be honest, kind of expecting last time we did a, did the overview. We had a little bit of a kind of a presentation where we got walked through the different components. And, and so I didn't have any questions personally prepared. I was assuming we were going to get that and then, you know, have more questions about that. But if other commissioners have questions right now.
I mean, if there's no specific questions, I, you know, I can go through a couple of the statements just to kind of explain where things are at, but I believe Terry, who's the engagement partner, did this meeting last year. Yes. And I, so I wasn't present for that, didn't know what he did and was not told, you know, to prepare for otherwise. So my apologies on that.
I think it'd be helpful to go through the different sections and just kind of give us a, you know, real general overview of what they are and
Absolutely.
Information that we can get from.
So I'm looking at the PDF and so I'm looking at report page 11, and that is the statement of net position. So if y'all want to scroll to that. So that shows everything of the city. That's the governmental activities, the business type, which is all of your, you know, utilities and the golf course, all rolled up into one column for each. This differs from the, the balance sheet that you'll see on page 14. Because this includes everything that's considered long-term. So your, your capital assets, your property, plant, equipment, that type of stuff. And then as well as your non-current liabilities, so any bonds payable, your pension liability, your OPEB, other post-employment benefits liability, all of those long-term items appear here. And they're not at the fund level. That's what the fund financial statements are beginning on page 14. So as far as you're concerned, it's typical that you guys want to see more at the fund level and what's currently, you know, the current focus method, current economic resource method is what we call it. So if we go to page 14, that's a better comparison of what you're looking at at the fund level, looking out for one year. And page 16 is the same, it's going to be looking out for one year, but for the statement of revenues and expenditures. And this is really going to line up more, this is going to look probably a little more familiar because this is almost how your budget is, is laid out, laid out as well. So, you know, by taxes, assessments, licenses, permits, et cetera. And then all of the current major categories of expenditures, including just general government and public safety. So that's the difference between these two sets of statements. There's one, we'll call it, you know, the 30,000 foot level and then the 10,000 foot level. And let's see. If we scroll to page, actually, let me see. On page 14. The second, you know, bottom half of the page is the breakdown of the various components of fund balance. And so in the general fund, there's many items that have been committed. And those have been, that, that's essentially what council has approved to commit to those particular projects, programs, what have you. And so you'll see your unassigned fund balance remaining after all of those commitments for the general fund is about 12.7 million. So that's still fairly healthy for the general fund. You'll see if we scroll back up, just for comparison sake, the unrestricted net position on page 11. Which is going to be the very bottom of that page, page 11, you'll see for governmental activities for that middle call or the first column, I'm sorry. We have a deficit of 26 million and that looks scary, but that's because really of the, the pension and OPEB liabilities. So prior to, you know, these recently got implemented, OPEB, I believe, were on year three. Pension liability, I believe, were on year six. So prior to that, these weren't on the face of the financial statements. So that unrestricted net position looked much healthier and was in the positive. So that explains the reason for that. So, you know, this is reasonable, honestly. A lot of my cities have a deficit unrestricted net position because that, or I'm sorry, that pension liability is just, you know, through the roof, which we all know. Um. On page 18 and 19 is the same similar type set of statements before the water sewer golf course. Those are your proprietary or business type activities. Let's see. I'm looking at page 19 to see just the overall change. So let's see, most, almost down to the bottom of that page, there's a change in net position. And water had a positive increase of 3.4 sewer, almost a million. The golf course actually did, you know, a little bit in the positive as well this year. So overall, looking healthy as well there.
Ask a question, please.
Absolutely.
On page 19, under the governmental activities, internal service. We have the insurance costs and claims of 2,941. Can you discuss that with us, give us some information about that?
From what I remember off the top of my head, I know you guys have an actuarial valuation that's done. And Elaine, you can jump in and correct me if you know more on this than I do. Yeah, but that, that's the, the, I guess, the, the cost and claims. And there's a related liability for that as well. If you scroll up one page to page 18. Claims and judgments payable outstanding of 1.7 million. Those numbers are coming, coming directly from that third-party valuation.
How's that compared to prior years?
I can jump in here. This is, you may recall, commissioners, that we've spoken quite a bit about our Internal Service Fund for Insurance. The city has had an Internal Service Fund for Insurance for a number of years. This is the first year where we are showing the total potential liability and the cost, et cetera, based upon an actuarial analysis that the city had done. So in a direct answer to your question, there previously was not a deficit of 1.5 million in this fund. That, this is a first occurrence this year because of appropriately accounting for that Internal Service Fund for Insurance. You, hopefully it rings a bell because it's something we've talked about a few times now. This is, this is where you actually get to see the impact on our city financials because of how we're accounting for the information from the actuarial report, which very high level, it looks at the total possible amount that the city might pay out in judgments, attorneys, claims handling, claims administration, et cetera. That amount will be revised every year based upon a new actuarial study because some claims will settle for less than what was originally estimated. Some are going to cost more. So this is a number that is going to change each audit. Our goal is to, and you heard about this, we talked about it, when we talked about the budget. Our goal is to start setting aside more funds each fiscal year to bring this fund, this, this fund into a balanced position. But it was stated in the fiscal year 22 budget, if you recall. We anticipate it's going to take fiscal year 22, 23, maybe into 24 to actually end up with a balanced fund in this particular fund. And again, I sort of caution people again, as, as Brianna said, it's a scary number when you see a negative 5.1.5 million at the bottom of this. The reality is all of the cities, it's similar to the OPEB and the Pers liability. The city's never going to have to pay all of that in one single year. It's the same thing with these claims. All of our claims are not going to settle in one fiscal year. A number of, especially the larger ones, are going to take a few years to resolve. So as long as we can, we have set a goal and it's in the city council's adopted financial policy to set a goal to start setting aside money into this fund. So over the next two fiscal years, maybe three, we'll end up in a balanced position here.
Okay, thank you.
I have a real quick follow-up. I don't want to derail this, but I'm looking at last year or the CAFRA for 2019. And for insurance costs and claims, we were reporting about $300,000. And then that's jumped up to 2.9 million this year. I'm just wondering, are we looking at apples and apples or does the 2.9 include things that weren't included in the 2019 CAFRA?
Right, the, the 2019 CAFRA would have only reported actual expenditure, so to speak, not the estimated cost of the outstanding claims.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions when it comes to business-type activities?
What was our actual for this year? Of the 2.9?
The actual expenses paid out, I believe, it was, it was the 2.9 that came from the valuation, yes? Elaine?
I would have to look at the actuary report. Unless Albert, Albert's online, he's the one who tracks this fund for us.
I'll have, I need some time to take a look at it.
Yeah, I don't recall it being that large of a, of an amount last year in 2020. So we can email out that information to the commissioners on the actual.
Thank you. I'll make a note. Okay. And then the next set of statements are on your successor agency fiduciary fund on page 21 and 22. Really no significant change there. This has, you know, been in place for, I don't know, almost 10 years now. And so that's, that's pretty routine. The notes, you know, I'm going to maybe scroll through. Notes seven are probably about 10 pages long and that's all of the details of your pension liability. All of that information is coming from the CalPERS valuation that we get as well. So this isn't something that we are necessarily calculating, but the city is part of that pooled plan. And so it's just kind of going over the changes. Page 50 might be of some interest to you. There's a table there that shows the current discount rate for, you know, the CalPERS has 7.15. If that went up or down a percentage point, it kind of just shows what it would do to your two liabilities there. One for miscellaneous employees, one for safety. Just for informational purposes. And. If we go to page 61, this is what I wanted you to see. This is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. And I remember, I think I was at one of the commission, one of these meetings, the sub-meetings last year. And I know there was a lot of back and forth with that original budget column. And so this year, we put a lot more work both sides, both, you know, finance department and us making sure we're on the same page. And those, you know, in total, total revenues and total expenditures agree exactly to your approved budget for fiscal year 2020. The actual announced then tied back up to page, I believe, 16, I think it was. And then just showing the variance between the two. So I know this is of, of much use to, to council typically, they like to see this.
Right now, Brianna, correct me if I'm wrong. This will include city council approved modifications to the budget.
Because that is correct.
Right, people like to go to the actual document that was approved, for example, those numbers won't match.
That will match your original column, but the final column would be very difficult for you to trace. You have to go through all the individual meetings and add up all of the council-approved amendments and changes and transfers, yeah.
Right, and that is where staff did spend a significant amount of time this year to make sure that was accurate.
Yeah. If you scroll down to page 70, this is just now, all of the funds, you know, that are considered non-major. They're not significant enough to be presented separately on the face up above of the financials up in the teens, 14 to 16, I believe. And so the total of this, the non-major, is what then rolls up to that top set of statements. And so it's just showing the, you know, further breakout here. Both the, the balance sheet, so assets and liabilities. And then beginning on page 78 is the revenues and expenditures for those funds as well. Past those is the budget versus actual for all of those non-major funds as well. Which again, all, you know, all those original budgeted columns agree to the initial approved budget by council. And beginning on page 109, 110 is the statistical section. A lot of this, you know, there's, there's pieces that come from a little bit of everywhere. Some of them agree, the first couple of schedules agree to all of the prior financial statements. So we helped put that one together. And then Armina, if you want to touch on any of the others that might be of interest to, to anyone here tonight. A lot of this information comes from external sources as well. But is there anything else that you maybe like me to touch on a little deeper or have questions on?
I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about our CalPERS pension liability and, and the tables on 49. We're looking backward in time, right? So this is.
That's correct, yeah. So it's, yeah, we're looking double backward in time because this is a 63020 financial statement. The measurement period is 63019 with the valuation date of 63018. And so it's, yeah, it's multiple years behind, but you know, that's just the quickest that, that CalPERS can turn that information around, unfortunately. Especially for this.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any, any deeper guides you would like to do in the sections?
If I could go back to the commissioners then and the Internal Service, the insurance costing claims. After I had a chance to peek and look at the details. What we will need to do in, for this audit. The amount is 2.9, but that is not just liability claims. When we create, when we establish this Internal Service Fund for Insurance in fiscal year 20 audit, this audit you're looking at, it's, it's workers' comp, it's liability, it's lawsuits, it's judgments, it's, it's administration, claims administration. Everything is in that number. Previous budgets and previous audits, things were budgeted differently and accounted for and shown differently in the audit. So in order, so the 2.9 is the correct total, but I don't want to scare anybody. That includes workers' comp, liability, claims administration, everything. So it's not just, oh, also our premiums, our insurance premiums, because we do pay for excess liability insurance, property insurance, everything is in that number, which is why it's a high number and you see it for the first time like this. So to sort of give you apples and apples, we'll have to dig through the previous year's budget detail to kind of give you an apples and apples comparison. But what is in this 2.9 number is all those things I mentioned. Everything from our insurance premiums, our excess insurance premiums, our claims and judgments, our workers' comp costs, our workers' comp administration, all of that is in that number. So hopefully that helps a little.
Just trying, so how much of this is more of a recurring cost versus a one-time in nature? So if we look forward, then is this kind of the scale of something where we get hit with annually?
Pretty much so, yes. Because if you look at, if you look at, a lot of it depends on, on major claims that get settled. So it's going to, it's going to fluctuate. But some of the large costs, like what we pay for, for liability insurance, excess coverage, those are big numbers. But I know, Albert, you wanted to add?
Yeah, the 2.9 also includes the actuarial number because to, to add it to the liability, we have to have an offsetting expenditure account. And that's where about roughly 1.7 million of that is from the actuarial.
Okay, can I ask a question? Um, would it be possible, one, is this the presentation we are going to use from here going forward?
Regarding this fund, yes.
Yes, okay. Um, would it be possible to get a breakdown of that number?
We can do that in, in, it won't be part of the audit.
No, just, just so that the commissioners can understand what it is.
Yeah, that would be great. Forward, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Commissioner Finley, did you have a question?
Actually, Commissioner Wood answered my, asked my question, I had the same one.
That was my question. Is, is a breakdown possible and appropriate for an audit document? Or, or I think it'd be helpful to kind of see trends over time on the breakdown.
Um, it wouldn't be appropriate in the audit document because it's a level, nowhere else we show that level of detail of individual items, expenditures. But it's definitely appropriate, something we include in every staff report. When the audit comes forward to you, we'll include it in the staff report. So year over year, you can see the numbers and how they.
Good.
I'll add on to that as well because that was the first year that we actually had that, that valuation bring the liability on the face of the statements. Now, next year, typically there's supposed to be a footnote in your insurance footnote. It's a table that's going to show the three years, the cost and the liability over the last three years, excuse me. But because this was the first year, there's really nothing to compare yet. So next year, it'll start accumulating over the next few, so that at least it'll be transparent in the footnote. And it'll be, you know, you'll easily be able to, to compare the last few years without having to go back and pull those old reports.
Thank you. Do we have other, other questions about the, the audit or the auditing process? I think I just have a kind of a general question in case, you know, city residents want to come back and look at this, this video. Just, you know, give us a brief overview of the auditing process and how, how your firm works with the Finance Department and, and checks, checks the, the data.
Sure, so the audit process is broken up into, I'd say, three major components. The first being what we call the interim or internal control phase. And so that's when we, you know, make sure that we have, this is, you know, what, our third, four, I'm losing my years, third year of this, of the contract. So we have a pretty solid understanding of the processes in place of how payroll is processed, cash dispersments, cash receipts, how everything's collected, where it's coded. But we still do a double check, we ask staff, you know, has anything changed in this process? Have staff, you know, staff turnover, has it affected any change in the controls? So once we have a solid understanding of those internal controls, we pick samples of various sizes depending on the area to test that those internal controls truly are in place. And so I know Elaine mentioned that we do, we're going to go over the findings that are still rolling forward from last year. I just want to tack on right now that we, we saw progress toward correcting those findings. But because of when that report was issued last year, I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Finance Team, October of last year.
Correct.
So June 30th, 2020 had already passed. So technically, there was no way we could have gone back in time to correct those. So they did their best with what they could moving forward. But I still had those findings technically in place as of June 30th, 2020. So I just want to be very clear that, you know, again, we saw dramatic changes, big, big, big progress. But that's the interim phase of the audit, it doesn't take too long, it's maybe a few days. But then the year-end portion is where we really test the actual balances. So once finance is comfortable that they have closed the books and posted all the necessary year-end entries, then we are provided with a trial balance, which is the details of, you know, I'm sorry, the balances of all accounts. And we go through and we perform procedures over, say, cash and long-term debt. We can confirm with the third party. So we can pull confirmations, you know, from, directly from the third party to make sure that those cash balances are correctly stated. Same with debt and bond balances. And we do some analytics and substantive procedures over the revenues and expenses. We look at them year to year, comparing them to the budget. You know, going into the details of maybe what changed and following up with inquiries of the finance team. I'm trying to think what else kind of high level. So, you know, it's going through all of those balances that you see on, on the face of the financial statements and performing various procedures to make sure that those are materially correctly, materially fairly stated. And, you know, we're not, we're not looking at everything here. There's a factor called materiality. And so that's, you know, a discretionary calculation that we come up with every year. And it's not necessarily shared with, with the Finance Department. It's proprietary in nature to the firm as to what our materiality thresholds are going to be. But very trivial little items, we don't necessarily look at, you know, 100%. There's no way we could do a 100% forensic audit. If by any chance we did come across any issues or instances. any issues or instances of fraud, then materiality does not apply. I just want to emphasize, we did not have that, but I'm just letting you know that if that were to ever occur, materiality does not apply and we would come to you or to, you know, straight to city council to discuss those items. And so that's the year-end, you know, phase of the audit. And then the third is kind of a little more hands, I don't know, I don't want to say hands-off by finance staff, but that's when we, on our side, using those numbers, prepare this document and then we send them a draft and say, you know, we might have some fill-in-the-blanks in the footnotes or that's when they then do a lot of their work in checking that all of the numbers agreed back to their accounting software and to their financial system. So that, you know, takes about a week or two on each side for us to go through the draft like that and that level of detail. So it was very successful this year and very, I feel a lot more streamlined than prior years. So I'm I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one and jumping right back in with them.
All right. Thank you for that overview. That's very helpful. Do the commissioners have any other questions?
Yeah, I have one quick one. I wasn't sure if you were planning on going over later on, but would you go over some of the findings that you ran to and if there's any in particular that, you know, we need to prioritize in terms of resolving going forward?
Yeah, Elaine, if you want to, you want to jump to that and go ahead and.
No, we can go and Brianna and everyone can can chime in. If you go towards the very back, very, very, very back of the very end of the CAFER, it ends on, I'm sorry, it's not a CAFER anymore, it's an ACFER. At page one thirty-two, then you'll see the page number, he starts all over again with page one. That is the the first page of the report on internal control that was prepared by our auditing firm. If you go to page three, they actually start on page three, just giving you all a moment to scroll to the very end.
Why is it no longer a CAFER? Like, why have we changed the name of this thing?
It's actually, um, the State Controller's Office issued a, oh, what do you want to call it? A rule, a guidance. Evidently, there, the acronym, CAFER acronym, when pronounced, I'm reading straight from the State Controller's page, when pronounced aloud, sounds the same as a derogatory term historically used as a racial slur. So in order to be sensitive to that, the State Controller's Office issued guidance based on a recommendation by the governmental county standards board to change the name from comprehensive annual financial report to annual comprehensive financial report. And that's basically the reason for it. So we are abiding by the State Controller's guidance on this matter. And it's effective with any audits beginning with an audit dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty and later. So this is the first one, twenty twenty.
Thanks for reading that, Elaine. It's been a very difficult change for us that literally use that term fifty times a day.
I mean, I'm going to just say audit from now on, audit.
That's fine.
Audit, because it's just more difficult to pronounce. But anyway, on page three are the schedule of findings. The first one is previously reported in nineteen. They indicate that on the the top there, having to do with bank reconciliations, as you're aware. This is going, this would cover the period, you know, July of nineteen to June of twenty. That's when the fact that the city was behind on bank reconciliations came to the forefront. It's before I started here with the city. The previous staff had brought in some temporary helpers, you may recall, from from account temps to get bankrupt reconciliations done. We completed them through June of twenty twenty, but they were completed late. I want to say by the time the auditors came in.
Think about May.
Yeah.
The final.
Right, almost, almost a whole year later, May of twenty-one. The council, though, on this forefront to address this concern, did a month ago, we were authorized of a full-time position. So a part-time position became a full-time position and that position's responsibility, working with Albert, has been to get these up, to get them up to date, the current ones, so that we can start the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit with completed bank reconciliations. So the the response to that one has been, the council's authorized an additional half of full-time equivalent employee to help us get these these done. So we we agreed with the finding. You know, they they were late. We are, to be honest, still a little bit behind. We're in June of twenty-one now. I believe we need about three months to do to catch up, but we plan to have those done. If you look at the response, we have our corrective action plan that's attached to this. We hope by September of twenty twenty-one. And then keep in mind too, you know, June, June thirtieth twenty twenty is the end of the fiscal year. But as you can imagine, in July and August, there's expenditures, there's revenues that come in that have to go be pushed back to fiscal year twenty-one because of the timing when we receive things. So where September twenty-one might seem late, actually, that's probably the soonest we could really do it when we take into account the revenues that are received that need to go back to fiscal year twenty-one. Not making an excuse, but they will be they'll be up to date by that, by that point in time. The next one was our accounting and management of capital assets. That was a finding in nineteen twenty. It's still a finding. We are to correct this going forward, again, we're talking about a period of time prior to June of twenty twenty. I can tell you, one of the benefits of our upgrade of our financial software is we actually have a module now that will make it easier going forward. Of course, that's going to start for fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two to identify these capital assets as they're being purchased or paid for, to make it easier to account for them at the end of the fiscal year. So it's one of the improvements we're getting with the upgrade that we've talked to you about before. That didn't help for the twenty twenty audit. And we're hoping it will help going forward. That's finding number two. Finding number three is our year-end closing process. We've made progress in this area, but things were still, we were still playing catch-up. We, you know, we've just finished the twenty nineteen audit in October and then had to jump into twenty twenty. We've made improvement. It's still not where we want it to be. I can tell you that the closing year-end closing for fiscal year twenty-one will be much better. We actually have a checklist and we're actually going to be meeting tomorrow as a staff to make sure all our i's and are dotted and t's are crossed regarding our year-end closing process. So we agree with this. There really wasn't much of a year-end closing done at the end of twenty twenty. It just got delayed because we were working on twenty nineteen audit. So we hope, we agree with this finding and we hope to make, again, make significant improvement when we do the twenty twenty-one audit. The next one, number four, is the lack of an accounting procedures, policy and procedures manual was a finding last year. We also agree with this finding. As you're all aware, the city lacks for a number of years, goes back many, many years. Up-to-date, complete procedures and policy manuals. This is something that there are, there is money in the budget for the current fiscal year. I believe it was a recommendation of the ad hoc committee and I believe we've discussed it with the commission where it might make sense to bring in a firm to just help us get those done so that we don't keep having this finding year after year. And they're important and it's one of those things that just, you talk about a priority thing. Commissioner Troy, this would be one of the highest priorities because that's what governs how we do things. So there are monies in the budget to bring in a consultant to help us get those done as quickly as possible. So we also agree with this finding. We do need accounting procedures in a policy manual. On page five, the fifth deficiency is grants management. This has to do with grant reimbursement requests being tracked and submitted in a timely manner. Again, this is going back to twenty twenty. Staff is in agreement with this policy for, you know, all sorts of reasons. You, you know, we we saw a little bit of it when I brought the budget to the the commission at your last meeting where staff was just late in submitting reimbursement requests to the grantors to get the city's money back. If you look at the audit, there's still some large outstanding balances on grants where we should have submitted a reimbursement request. I could tell you a lot of those will be cleared up in the twenty twenty-one audit because because we've worked really hard to get those submitted and in so we can get the city's money back. But for fiscal year twenty twenty, we agree with this being a finding, the city was not as prompted, it should, as it should have been in submitting reimbursement requests and then appropriately, you know, accounting for them in our financial records. That's number five. Then on number six, non-compliance with debt reporting, what this one has to do is there's a required filing pertaining to our bond requirements. We need to have a completed audit in order to file that filing. So when the audit is late, we're late in our bond filing. That's basically what that finding is. Again, we're in agreement with it. It's something we can't file till the audit's done. So we'll be filing it for this, for fiscal year twenty twenty and getting it filed. But in the meantime, it was submitted late because the audit wasn't done on time. The non-compliance with budget policy is the city manager can amend individual line items within a fund between divisions and programs. What this means in everyday speak is the city's financial policy, the current ones that were approved that you reviewed recently, we really, we updated them and modernized them. But there's always been a policy in the city's financial policy that allows the city manager to make line item changes. So for example, if public works, as long as it's in the same fund, you can't go between the water fund and the general fund or the sewer fund and the water fund. So keep it simple. In the general fund, if public works needed money for a particular purpose and library, maybe a bad example, but had some excess fund, the city manager is authorized, based on the city manager's authority approved by the city council to do, to transfer funds from the library to public works or from, you know, any department to any department, as long as it's been the same fund. There were some instances that got through where the city manager's authorization was not signed on the budget transfer forms. Again, how we've corrected this going forward is we have updated our our forms and it's one of the things now that we always check for. If there's a transfer, we make sure that it has the appropriate signatures before Albert or Armina actually make the transfer, because they are the two individuals on staff who can make the transfers. So now they make sure that everything is signed appropriately and that that goes for all of fiscal year twenty-one. We make sure that everything is signed appropriately before the transfer is made, but that's what that finding is.
Elaine, excuse me, is there a limit on that? A maximum that the city manager can do?
No, they can't exceed, they can't, they can't exceed the amount. So for example, bottom line, I don't know, we can pick up a number, you know, five hundred thousand bottom line total. They can't, they can't make it make a transfer. So it's now even a hundred dollars more than that. They have to stay within the budgeted totals. The next one is number, oh, that was the last one.
And that's all of them, Elaine. So I want to point that out. So the last one, number oh seven, double oh seven, also says right underneath, previously reported as finding, you know, it was reported last year. If there had been any new findings in the current year, they would follow this. So I'd like to point that fact out is that there were no new additional findings for fiscal year twenty twenty. So that is great progress and I believe last year our findings went through number ten. We had ten instances. And I think three of those dropped off this year. So we only have seven total. Yeah, so so definite progress for getting there. I just wanted to put that out and give the department kudos.
And I can, I can share the three, the three that came off, just for your information and anybody watching. A segregation of duties, particularly having to do with processing payroll where one employee had access to to do too much essentially. We have now segregated the duties. So that finding has come off. Another one was, you might recall, there were errors in the O P E D, other post-employment benefits data where some employees were included who shouldn't have been included. For example, that has all been fixed. We did a new O P E D. There was a new actuarial done for this report and it has been corrected. So now it's a hundred percent accurate. So that finding came off. And then the last one that came off was, oh, non-compliance with the purchasing policy. Extra kudos to staff on that for fiscal year twenty. You know, it was a whole new team in finance and they worked really hard to make sure that the city's municipal code was being followed with respect to purchasing. So that was a huge one that came off due to the team you have with you here tonight on this meeting. So kudos to them for that, because that predates Marcy and me. So that your current staff did that all on their own. And that, those are the three that came off, just as a looking back a little bit to where we were last year.
And just to clarify, when those findings come off, it means that you were in compliance by the end of June twenty twenty or you're in compliance for the full calendar year?
June, as of June twenty twenty.
Okay.
Elaine, I'm not sure who would be the best person to answer this, but going back to the second finding about capital assets missing from the detailed listing of capital assets, I'm just kind of curious, what is that detailed listing? Where is it? You know, who maintains it? It sounds like we're going to be using, using software in the future, but I'm just kind of curious how how that that listing was was handled up until this point.
Yeah. So last year, what we did was we actually, we have a separate capital asset management software that we use for some of our clients that we, you know, do bookkeeping for. So we assisted with that and we kind of compiled it based on what the city previously had just in Excel and I think Albert was the one that went through with us in very much detail last year to make sure that we captured everything that we, that the city knew of in that listing. And then we provided it to to finance and that's what they use to kind of roll forward into the twenty twenty audit and make any additions and disposals, et cetera. I I think what's still missing and maybe we, not missing, but needs to definitely be reevaluated and this needs to be done by a third party is the infrastructure. That's, you know, that that's something that definitely a separate consulting-type firm professional needs to come in and do, because that's not, that's not an easy task that public works can can do given their current workload.
Is that something where someone would have to determine evaluation for the infrastructure or?
That's what we suggest, yes.
Okay.
And and Brianna, correct me if I'm wrong, that means like, you know, how much are streets worth? How much are water mains worth?
Correct.
It's huge.
Yeah, it is very huge. Yeah.
Are there firms that do that type of valuation work?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Great. Yeah, that that's interesting. Do the commissioners have any questions about any of these findings? Or the city's corrective action plan?
No, I I just want to say, good job, team. Thank you. You've done a really, really heroic job here.
Yeah, I agree. I think this has just been, you know, progress and hard work and it's paying off, so. Thank you to staff to, for all of the work you've done on this.
As as an outsider, listening in and the mouse in the corner over here for the last six months, I I'm just a mosque rocket, the amount of work that you've done in such a short period of time. You know, it took years to better choose my words carefully, you sort of missed, mess it up. And you've you've corrected that, get back on track and, you know, thirty-six months to undo it and, you know, and and six months, you you're back, almost back on track again. So congratulations.
And I would share that, you know, Marcy Medina has has been behind the scenes. She's our technical expert. She will be with us for a while longer, as am I. The city has not scheduled interviews yet or anything for a new finance director. They're waiting for the right individual to come along. So you'll have this team together, rolling. to come along. So you'll have this team together rolling into the 2021 audit. We'll still be here.
I can jump in here on, I, I'm delighted to hear that. I mean, I know that everyone would like to take a, a deep breath and say, yeah, we, we got this done and then we can move on to other things, but that this, we haven't had this level of competence and continuity in the finance department for some time, and it's really refreshing. So thank you very much.
All right, yeah, I think we all agree on that. Any more questions or comments or discussion? I actually after we, we finish up on the, the findings, I just have a couple of questions myself from that management report. But before we go there, any other, any other questions about the findings? Okay. I'm not sure if this is, this is so much an audit question, but, but I'll throw it out there. In, in the management discussion, there's a increase in general government expenses. I wonder, I'm thinking Elaine, you might be the best person to address that and what accounts for that, that increase.
Which page are you on?
I'm looking at page seven. And we have city of self-passing a change in net position. I'm looking in the, the first column under expenses, general government. It, it increased from about six million to about ten point two million. And there was a note at the bottom about the net position decreasing by three point five million due, due to an increase in general expenses across multiple departments. I'm just curious, is that salary increases or, or something else?
No, what this one is primarily, remember when Brianna was giving her presentation? This is the, you want to call it the a hundred thousand foot level. This includes a lot of, or a significant amount of, of, call it non-cash expenditures, liabilities, all of our liabilities are shown here. All of the assets, all of the liabilities, big one being pension. And it's, it's what's the right word? A portioned out between the various departments. And so that increase there, if you, if you're curious and just what we would envision as expenditures, when you think about the city's budget, that's where you would go to the other page, which is on page, Brianna, you remember what page that was? The actual expenditures, which we're more familiar with, I'll begin on page, hold on. Then somebody finds it before me.
Sixteen, sorry.
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. If we all look at page sixteen, that is the page that is more closely associated when we think of budget and what our expenditures are, which shown on page six. Brianna can explain it better than me, but it's sort of a, a full composite of all of our liabilities, even, even non-cash ones is the best way to explain it in the simplest way possible. But when you think of just expenditures and a department being over or under budget, that's where you will find that on page sixteen.
Yeah, the condensed table on page six, Elaine, you had it right. It's, it's including all the long-term items, the pension liability and OPEB. That's the biggest piece.
Right.
Thank you.
And I did, since you brought it up, I did look at the details as part of my, because I am curious on how the departments performed. Looking for my cheat sheet here. Fired, the thing, Fire Department and Police Department, I believe, were, came in over budget due to overtime running higher than, than what was originally anticipated. And then Management Services. It was legal expenses. I don't, I, I cannot explain why, for example, I think it was about two hundred and forty was budgeted for legal expenses and they actually ended up coming in at, at about twice that. I wasn't here then. I don't know the reason why, but I can tell you that those were the main areas when it comes to just expenditures, where the departments came in over budget. Everyone else was at or under.
Thank you Elaine. And let me see, we do, we have an attendee, but I think that's that's the bar, right? So we don't have any public comments on this agenda item. Okay. Well, unless we have any, any public comments or further questions or discussion before we I just have a quick question. This, after, after the, the sort of audit is with us, it goes to City Council, correct?
Correct.
All right. And it looks like our agenda item is to review and I think that staff report was to review, receive and file, is that right? Okay, so do we, do we, would that include a recommendation to City Council, or is that just a?
The commission, the commission can include a recommendation that this be forwarded to the City Council. That would be appropriate. Also, if you'd like to do that.
Further discussion from, from the commission on this? Do I, do we have a motion? This, this, would someone like to state, state a motion, so we have a clear record?
I move that we recommend that this, that the audit go to the City Council.
All right, so we're, we're going to move to receive, file and recommend that the annual comprehensive financial report for the City Council. Does that sound good? Okay, do you have a second on that one?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I think that passed unanimously.
Before we conclude and you all jump off of the meeting, your next meeting would have been next week. Staff is seeking authorization. You normally go dark in August for your next meeting to be September, the September meeting. That will be a busy meeting. At that time, I hope to have the information regarding our pension liability and what to do about it. We're also going to have a, one of the things on your work plan is to review our investments and to receive a report from our investment advisor, and also to start talking about, the council wanted to consider what's the right word? Getting out of fossil fuels, you know, different types of investments. So that will be, you have those two pretty hefty items for you in September. Just if that's okay with the commission. So this would be your only meeting for the month of July. Your next meeting would be your regular, regular September meeting.
What day is September?
Oh, let's see, Stephanie, do you know the meeting date in September?
Twenty-third.
Twenty.
September twenty-third. It'll be in-person meeting.
Yes, I should say, at that point, it'll be in-person meeting in the council chambers. This is our last, this is our last Zoom meeting.
Hey.
I know some of the other commissions are still doing a hybrid meeting.
Right, the hybrid meetings last through July and August. The hope is that by September, we can, can be fully back in the council chambers. Now, there is some discussion because there about whether or not a commissioner can still participate via Zoom somehow. I do believe we're going to work that out. But the intent, they really want to come back to in the council chambers, understanding there'll be some circumstances where we might need to go another month or two with Zoom, but eventually, the, the thing, the thing, just so you're, I'm sorry to take so much time. The, there's a Brown Act. The governor has suspended this parts of the Brown Act that require a posting wherever you happen to be for the meeting. So in the olden days before COVID, you might have remembered this, if a council member was on vacation in Hawaii and wanted to participate in the meeting, we actually had to post a notice in Hawaii, Ellen's remembering, in Hawaii on that council member's hotel door. So if somebody is in Hawaii and wants to participate, they can go into there and participate. Well, that's been suspended. So at some point, the governor is going to go back to the old Brown Act, which means in order for a commissioner or a council member to participate, not in the council chambers, we'll have to post your door, et cetera. That hasn't happened yet. It's probably a bit more explanation than you needed. So until the governor rescinds our ability to not have to post everywhere, we can accommodate a, a commissioner who might need to still participate by Zoom. But once that order is rescinded, then we'll go back to pre-COVID ways of meeting entirely.
Okay. Okay, I will not be able to make it for September.
Okay.
Will you be able to do a Zoom, Zen, if possible? I don't know yet. I'm expecting a baby that week, so. Yeah, maybe not.
Okay. We'll stay, we'll, we'll stay in touch with you, Zen, to see what you can do. It's understood. Okay.
All right.
Staff comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so yeah, I think this is, we're really happy that we're, we got to this point and thank you for your, your presentation, Brianna, and also Elaine. And I think we're about ready to wrap up. So I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So though.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you, and we'll see you in September and, and good luck, Zen, if we don't see you.
Thank you for having me, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.